We would like to welcome you to the 2010 election road trip. I'm Nels Jensen, the Director of Content and Programming for the Press Enterprise. We would like to thank everyone for coming to participate tonight. We would also like to thank everyone in our audience and everyone who is watching online. This is our inaugural road trip initiative. We are sponsored, of course, by the Press Enterprise, the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Park District, and Mount San Jacinto College. We are conducting 25 forums over five days across western Riverside County. Today, we are in San Jacinto. We started Monday in Beaumont, Tuesday, we are in Riverside, and Thursday and Friday, we will be at the Menifee campus of the college. All of these forums are being streamed live on PE.com and on Ustream.tv. These also, these forums all will be available on demand on the Election Road Trip page of the political area of the PE.com website. As I mentioned, this is our final forum of the day. This is our fifth of today and the sixteenth in three days. Now, we are going to focus on the Hemet City Council. The city was founded in 1910 and is celebrating its centennial this year. It has a growing population and has seen significant changes over the past decade and, like many other cities, budget challenges in the most recent past and present. Once a retirement haven, the city has welcomed more families and a very diverse population. The five-member council has two seats up for election. Robin Lowe is the only incumbent running. And now, I'd like to turn this over to the moderator from Mount San Jacinto College. Please welcome Professor Willie Hamilton.
I would like to welcome everyone to Mount San Jacinto College. I am Professor Willie Hamilton. I'm Chair of the Political Science Department and Chair of the Department of Society and Behavior. I am going to introduce the candidates. Then, we're going to have a one-minute opening statement from each candidate, and then we're going to swing into the questions. We have Diana Taverner is the first candidate to my left, a retired businesswoman. Joyce Thibodeau, independent business owner. Jim Cleverie, business consultant trainer. Linda Cooper, small business owner. Melissa Galetta, salesperson. Robin Lowe, retired marketing manager. Richard Flores, home care provider. Larry Smith, businessman and planning commissioner. David Peters, teacher. And Alfred Ayala, banker and airman. I think they're seated out of order down there, aren't they?
No.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, but Peters is at the end. I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Okay, we're going to swing into our opening statements, and Diana Taverner is going to be the first one. A one-minute opening statement, please.
I am Diana Tab-- sorry. I am Diana Taverner. I am a retired businesswoman. I'm 65, and I've lived in the San Jacinto Valley for close to 25 years. I'm running on a back-to-basics platform. I stand for fiscal, common sense. I'm proactive, not reactive. I believe in public safety and public library, long-term revenue sources, and jobs. My relevant qualifications are: a business college graduate, former planning commissioner, Hemet School District volunteer, grand jury member 2009 and '10, president and board member of the Villas and Seven Hills, former Hemet business owner, Estadio Mansion Restoration Committee, and a Valley community volunteer.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Thibodeau?
I'm Joyce Thibodeau. You were close, though.
Okay. Sorry.
That's all right. I have lived in the Valley for 31 years. My husband was born here, been born and raised, and his family's been here over 60 years. We've raised our three children, all graduated from college and on their way to their own individual careers. I started in the industry of escrow back 23 years ago here in the Valley and proceeded through the ranks to where I purchased my own company 11 years ago and have been managing and running that company now successfully. I run on my platform of I am pro-business and anti-tax, and I believe that we need fiscal responsibility. And with that, that I feel is my qualifications for running for Hemet City Council. Thank you.
Mr. Cleverie?
Good evening. Good work? Good evening. Uh, my name?
Nope.
Okay. Good. Good evening. Much better. My name is Jim Cleverie, and I have lived in this valley for over 40 years. And I went to school here, graduated from Hemet High School. Went and got my business education at the University of California, Riverside. Got my MBA degree at the University of Redlands. And I've got my two senior parents living in town. I'm married and have a 19-month-old boy. Currently work for a company called Dale Carnegie as a business consultant and a business trainer. And we go to companies and help them improve their profits, bottom line, efficiencies, decrease expenses, those types of things. So, we work with them to help them achieve their goals. I'm here tonight, just like you folks, and I'm running just because of folks like you. We're concerned about the direction Hemet is going. I'm not happy with the way we've managed our budget. I'm not happy with the decisions that's been going on. I'm frustrated, just like you are, and I want to do something about it. I want to be in council, work for you, do the best that we can. I have the passion, I have the vested interest to be in this community for my future family and my kids and my parents, to make Hemet a better place. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cooper?
Thank you. I'm Linda Cooper, and I've lived in Hemet for 30-plus years. I've raised my children there, worked there, and lived there, and have enjoyed a quality of life unlike many communities. The last few years, we've seen that quality of life diminish. I am here to tell you, we can get it back. We have so many assets in our Valley that we seem to ignore and overlook. We are dwelling on negative, and I think we should think positive. I am very pro-business. I'm a small business consultant, and I'm very involved in the community. Over the years, I worked with the Save Our Station group, and we saved and restored the Santa Fe Depot on the corner of Florida and State Street in Hemet. It is one of the cornerstones of the community, and it needs to be preserved. I also sit on the Hemet Traffic Commission, and we deal with a lot of problems with traffic and our lack of very good infrastructure in the Valley. We have blight, we have boarded-up homes, we have crime, but we can overcome all of this because, as a community of people, we have such a wealth--
Thank you, Ms. Galetta.
Good evening. My name's Melissa Galetta. I've been a Hemet resident for the past 29 years, and I've attended Hemet Unified Schools and graduated from Hemet High. I attended Cal State University San Bernardino and graduated with a bachelor's degree in Business Administration with an emphasis in marketing. I've been a pharmaceutical sales representative for the past 12 years, and I've now negotiated multimillion-dollar contracts and taken part in committees with a variety of different level professionals. I'm also the president of my children's PTA. I've been married to my husband, Robert, who is a detective with Hemet Police Department for the past 14 years. I've been married to him for 14 years. He has been a detective for 14 years. Sorry. And we have two beautiful daughters. The three issues I'd like to address in running for city council are safety. We have to continue to provide top-notch safety for our community while reducing the cost. Services, we have to look at our city while providing services such as the library and the Simpson Center and examine new activities for the youth. And stability, with most communities, it's important.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lowe?
Thank you. I think it's working. Correct?
Yes.
I think, okay. Thank you very much. Good evening. Hemet is in an economic crisis. We have seen property tax and sales tax this past year, in the past two years, drop 30%. And next year offers no more relief. However, we will weather this financial storm, but we can do that if we live within our current revenues. Our city has cut city staff and salaries, sacrifices that are hard to make, but we continue to provide essential services. Excuse me. Public safety needs to be put first in this Valley. We are not going to expand our economic structure without providing safe homes and safe businesses. I applaud the public safety force that we have. They have made success from butter, and that's very difficult to do in this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flores?
Hello. My name is Richard Flores. I have a broker's license. I own two real estate companies, owned and managed. Also, own mortgage company. I probably consider myself as a community organizer. I've been organizing for 20 years or so. I am very concerned about the economic difficulties Hemet is going through, and I'm very concerned about the decisions that are being made to correct that. We are in a deficit this year. We have like $5 million in the red, and next year doesn't look any better. It's estimated that Hemet is probably going to be between $3 and $3.5 million in the red next year. So, I'm for bringing jobs to the community. I would like to attract industry and manufacturing and bring in good jobs to the city of Hemet. I'm also probably going to be the only one that's proposing a half percent of one, half percent in, a sales tax increase to raise $4 million to help offset some of the budget. But also, this sales tax is a targeted sales tax with a five-year termination date, and the money will be used for--
Okay, thank you.
--library and Simpson Center. Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to the Press Enterprise for providing this format where these candidates get an opportunity to share their views. Professor Hamilton, thank you for hosting. Nels, thank you for your work. And Lewis, you've got hard work. We appreciate it. My name's Larry Smith, and I spent three decades in this Valley. I came here as a young 26-year-old and brought my new bride and ended up raising my family here. My two kids are, went to the Hemet School District. I'm proud of the fact they lived here, and I recall those days that this place had something special. This is my hometown. I watched over the last couple of years deterioration in this Valley. I'm frustrated by that. I had three options. I could pack my bags and leave. I could continue to complain, or I could jump in and do something. Spent the last 18 months on the Planning Commission. We've seen some great success, chairing that commission, moving things forward. I really want the opportunity to continue the momentum of moving and progressing this city in a place when it's ready for the great recovery. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Peters?
Hello. My name's David Peters, and I'm a candidate for the Hemet City Council. I've lived in Hemet for 40 years, so 40 out of 100. That's not too bad. I've served on the Hemet School Board. I attended Hemet schools and graduated from Hemet High School. I graduated from Cal State San Bernardino with a degree in mathematics. And my platform, in the first priority, if I'm elected, will be public safety. We're in a recession right now, and we're making budget cuts, and we need to make sure that we're focused on the future and future concerns, and that's going to be public safety. So, that would be my first thing. I think that we need a balanced budget. I think the council members need to be, listen to the community if they are elected. If I'm elected, we have our email address and our regular address. If anyone writes or emails, I will respond within 24 hours and get back to you on any concerns that you might have. I'm for keeping the Hemet Library and the Simpson Center open, and I oppose rapid growth, which got us into this problem that we're facing right now.
Okay, thank you very much. The next question goes to the incumbent first, Ms. Lowe. Why are you running for reelection?
I'm sorry?
Why are you running for reelection?
Why am I running for reelection? I am the only incumbent. Oh, sorry. I am the only incumbent, and I believe that, right now, facing the crisis that we're facing, experience does count. I think that I have dealt with situations at the city with other council members in the past. We have solved problems, and we have planned for the future. And I don't see a lot of that planning going on right now, and I think it's essential that we return our budget to a two-year budget and that we begin to emphasize the positive aspects of this city.
Okay, thank you. Now, for the challengers, your question is, why are you running? Ms. Thibodeau, you're first up.
I'm running for city council because I feel that with my business management skills that I can bring discipline to City Hall, I think that in the past, formal, former councils and council members have not financially forecast into the future. This economy that we are currently in did not sneak up on anybody. We all knew that it was eventually coming. Over four years ago, Hemet boasted that they had more than $10 million in reserves, and we are now, as you know, in a deficit. That is poor spending, poor spending decisions, and I feel that with good decisions and good choices and looking into the future, we can make a change.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cleverie?
Testing. Just like our residents that are watching and those that are here, again, I reiterate, I'm frustrated with the decisions, the direction that Hemet is going in, and the frustration has made me run this time. I don't, am I coming through? Testing?
Yeah.
Okay. To do something about it, to make better decisions for Hemet. You know, we have to manage our budget better than it has been managed in the past. You know, we can't no longer spend money that we don't have. We have to spend within our means. Next time there's an economic upswing, we need to spend your tax dollars on critical, department's critical services, and we need to begin to save, because next time there's an up, there will be a down slope, and we need to have some money saved for that rainy day so that we're not facing the issues that we're facing right now that we could have planned for. You know, we need to, as a community, support our efficient police department and improve public safety because that directly impacts the quality of life for our seniors, for our spouses, for our kids, and makes it a better place to be. We need to get together and support our beautiful Hemet Public Library and keep it open every day of the week. And the last thing is, the council needs to do a better job communicating with the residents. We need to make all of us, all of you, part of the solution. Get that civic pride back out. Get involved, get emotional, get excited to do what's best for the community, work as a team, and tackle the challenges that we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Galetta? No, no, wait a minute, sorry. Ms. Cooper? Sorry.
Thank you. I am running because I care. I care about the city of Hemet. I care about our Valley. We can do so much because we have so much. I'm one of those people who gets involved. I sit on Traffic Commission, President of the Hemet Library Foundation, Vice President of the Hemet Heritage Foundation, Chair of the Hemet Mobile Home Rent Review Commission, Co-Chair of the Hemet Centennial Committee, Member of the American with Disability Act Appeals Board, and, as I said previously, I was President of Save Our Station. We saved and restored the Santa Fe Depot. I care. I think I have good ideas. I've been around a long time. I have worked with the city. As Head of the Chamber of Commerce, I work closely with the city on many aspects, but we need to get the people involved. I have really good people skills. I love people. I love to talk to people, but more importantly, I listen to people. And you, the people, are the answer to all of our problems. Thank you.
Ms. Galetta?
I'm running for city council because I love Hemet. I was, I decided to run for city council when I was sitting in Starbucks with my daughter, and she noticed a lady walking back and forth down Florida. And then, this lady got in a car with a gentleman, and my eight-year-old asked, "Mommy, why did she get in the car with that guy? I don't think she knows him." How do you explain prostitution to an eight-year-old when you're sitting in a public venue like that? I know I don't enjoy getting panhandled when walking from my car into a store. I don't enjoy the gangs or the graffiti going on in the Valley. These are some of the reasons I'm running for city council. I love Hemet. My family loves Hemet. We've been involved in the community for a very long time, and I want to give something back to Hemet. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Flores?
I'm running because I care about the community. I care about the economic situation. I care about some of the decisions that are being made. I am very supportive of the library and the Simpson Center. I think that, you know, it kind of feels like a disgrace to shut down the Simpson Center, which is a senior citizen center, and for half the community is senior. I think that, you know, that is, it's not a very good decision for the city and for the community. I'm also about bringing jobs. We need to bring jobs. We need to grow the city. We can't stand still. Standing still is not a solution. We have to look at ways to bring businesses and bring in some more revenues to the city. We have to grow the revenue. I know right now, we're, we're, there's a lot of concessions going on, and all of that is going to balance the budget. It's not going to put nothing on reserve. And next year, it's going to be like a $3 to $3.5 million deficit again. So, we have to be looking at raising revenues because we've already been cutting for the past two, three years, and next year, it's going to be real hard to cut. So, I'm suggesting the sales tax. I think that we all need to sacrifice equally, the citizens of Hemet, as well as the police department and the unions in the, in the city, and the, at-large workers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Well, tough times calls for tough action. I spent 30 years in management, and last three years, when this great recession started, as we were calling it, we've had to have tough action where I'm employed. We've had to unfortunately lay people off. We've had unfortunately scale back, but still manage and function business. You know, politicians, they've always promised more than they can deliver, and they've always delivered more than they could afford. And we've got to stop that. I want to reduce the size of government. I want to operate efficiently, effectively. I want to bring this city back to its fiscal responsible state. Got the skill set, ran a small business and two small businesses in this community early on, and from day one, I realized the difficulties it was to manage small business. Now, I operate big business with the same difficulties. I bring the skill set to the council to make the tough decisions in these tough times. One of the reasons I want to run, and plus, I care deeply for this community, I want this community restored to what it was in the days when I first arrived. That's my reasons for running.
Mr. Peters?
Well, I care about the community also. I'm glad that we have a lot of people running for the council that care about Hemet. I'm running because my 10-year-old son, Adam, said, "Hey, you should run for this council seat," and, because I was talking to him about concerns. I, I'm running because I've lived in Hemet for 40 years. I've driven up and down Hemet streets for 28 years. I graduated from the school system. Both my boys go to attend school here. Both my boys were born in Hemet. I'm, I'm running because I care about Hemet, and I want to see good decisions made on the council. And I've seen recently, in the last, I'd say, six years, I've seen a lot of bad decisions with track housing, rapid growth. We need to do smart growth. We need to be cautious about what we allow in the city, and I think that's where we're going wrong, so that's why I'm running.
Okay. Ms. Taverner?
My family is committed to this Valley, and I'd like to think that all the residents of Hemet, their young families, young and old, are committed also, along with our city employees and their families. But I just don't see that happening now. Our city employees are being laid off, our, their benefits are being cut, their pay. It's a constant worry, a source of worry for them, and I don't see us keeping valuable employees if this keeps up. I'd like them to know that I would cut our budget to the bare bones so this wouldn't happen again. And I can cite, I have taken over my homeowners association for the past two years. When I started, we had no reserve fund. Our checking account was minimal. We went month to month. And now, after two years, we are self-managed. We have a large reserve. Our checking account has thousands of dollars in it we didn't have before, and we are self-managed and we, uh, thank you. The bottom line is, I think I can make a difference, and I hope you do, too. Thank you.
Moving to the next question. What qualities do you possess that would make you a good city council member? Mr. Cleverie, you're going to be first up on that question.
First of all, as I mentioned earlier, I've been in the community over 40 years, grew up here. You know, for those that have been here a long time, used to go to the Hemet Fairgrounds every year. So, that small-town feeling is what I'd like to preserve as we continue to grow intelligently. So, I have a passion for our community. I have a vested interest that the decisions that are made are good for us, for seniors, for kids, because I have all those categories in my family, in my world. As far as background, you know, business consulting, business training, helping companies achieve goals, be more efficient, increase their profits, you know, that's my background. So, I think, I know that I possess a solid business background. But you know, when you, when you take all that into consideration, take the background and take the fact that I've been here, I think the most important is the passion that I possess to really do what's best with Hemet, work with the community, involve you, outreach, not be separate somewhere else so you don't know where I'm at or what I'm doing, but involve you, be accessible, work with you to, to take care of the challenges that Hemet has. Thank you for that. So, that, I believe, is the strongest characteristic, the passion and commitment to do what's best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper?
I have close to 40 years' experience in financial and business management. I also have common sense. I think a combination of that proves to be a good quality for city council. I also like to work with people. I like to listen to people's ideas. I've been involved in many areas in the city, many more areas in the community, and with, with that, being a good listener, having common sense, I think those are qualities would make, that would make a good city council representative.
Ms. Galetta?
I will be a successful council member because I have education and practical experience in business and marketing. I believe I'll bring a fresh approach and to the way business is conducted in the Valley while, while limiting big money and behind-the-scenes players. I know the history of the city, and I'm not a career politician. I haven't been on any special committees, so I don't have any special favors to return to anyone. Hemet needs a fresh, a fresh approach, a new leadership. Thank you.
Ms. Lowe?
I believe that I can bring 45 years of business experience back to the council again. I do have the experience of regional government and relationships, partnerships that we have formed not only with residents and senior groups that we've been advocating for years in this Valley, but partnerships on a state level and a national level to return revenue, to not be afraid to ask for it, and to demand that it stay in our community. All too often, the state has come in and raided our coffers, and I think it's time that we stood up as we can and as we have in the past and said, "No more." I do know the budget. I know it inside and out. There are many ways that we can save the waste that has occurred in the last couple of years. Thank you.
Mr. Flores?
I have a business degree in Business Administration and minor in Sociology. I've been in real estate for 19 years. I own two real estate companies, owned and managed them. I also own a mortgage company, and I've been a community organizer for at least 20 years. I bring to the table maybe common sense and the best interest of all the community, all the members of the community. I do not agree on, on laying off workers. I think that would hurt the economy, that would hurt the revenues for the city. So, I, I, you know, that's my, the whole thing comes down to decisions. Who can make the best decision for the city? And you have to have common sense, and you have to look across the board, study the situation, and come up with the best answer. So, basically, that's what I've been to the table, just common sense, community experience.
Mr. Smith?
When you decide to run for city council, they don't hand you a manual that says, "This is how you do it." Your experience comes out of your life experience. I spent nearly five years on the Board of Trustees of a university that virtually had every department, except a fire department, of a city. I sat on the Business and Finance Committee, and we would grind out year after year after year a $32 million budget. I traveled nationwide and was in charge of 26 manufacturing plants from coast to coast, and I worked with professionals and figured out and found out how successful business is operated. Now, city government is not necessarily identical model for business, but it is a service business, and that's what we're in the business of doing, is that we, we take the people's money, taxes, and they expect services. We need to manage that. Manage business, come with the skill set to take care of these difficult financial times under difficult budget scenarios. I want to reduce the size of government. We can operate more efficiently and effectively and take the tax dollars that all of us pay and use them for the benefit of this community.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peters?
Well, the budget is a really big concern, so I have a degree in mathematics-- So I have a degree in mathematics. I served four years on the Hemet School Board. The budget, the city budget is twenty-nine point four million dollars. The Hemet School District is four times that size. I have a vast knowledge of the city of Hemet. I have no special interests that I'm representing. I listen to the community and I'm not easily offended, as you might have seen some members of the councils before. That's it.
Okay. Ms. Taverner? What qualities do you possess that would make you a good city council member?
The qualities I listed earlier, my qualifications, my education, my background, my age, my experience. But I am concerned about the direction Hemet is taking. Low-cost housing and the abundance of cheap rental property is changing the fabric of the city of Hemet. And it's in a, at a rapid pace and violent crime and gang activity is taking place. Past spending practices of the city council have not taken care of our basic public needs. Two years of cuts to the police and our fire departments are not the answer. Revenues continue to decline while services continue to have demands on them. It's time for Hemet to get back to the basics and with our service priorities and issue resolutions are needed during these critical times. I think securing the fabric of our public safety is my primary goal. We must restore our public safety departments to acceptable levels so that we may all feel safe in our beautiful city. Funding these units will be a top priority of mine.
Ms. Tibido?
Well, again with my, am I on? Again with my twenty-two, twenty-three years of experience and most importantly...
Get another one.
Hello? Is that one better? Okay, twenty-three years of experience and basically the most important thing is no personal agenda. My only agenda is for those taxpayers... Taxpayers, hey! Taxpayers and the responsibility of managing their money responsibly. We need someone in city hall that will stand up, they will not be intimidated by government bureaucracy and the pressure to overspend when that's just not financially possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question. Due to declining tax revenues and state's support for cities, cities are now called upon to make cuts to balance their budget. What cuts would you make? Ms. Crouppa, you're first up on this one.
Well, as has been said, we are really in a critical time period with the decline in taxes and with the state taking monies from the cities. The first thing we need to do is pass the proposition that does not allow the state to take further money from the cities. We need to keep our tax dollars here where they belong. Other cuts, we need to look at our budget. There are places we can cut reasonably without cutting services, without cutting public safety and without closing library and Simpson Center. We need to provide for our citizens, we really do. But at the same time, we need to be very frugal. There is waste at the city. We need to look at energy grants where we can put solar power on some of the city buildings which will cut expenses. So there are ways to cut, but we also have to make sure that we continue with our city services.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Galetta?
Well, first off, we don't need to make cuts to personnel. We need to make cuts in areas such as mandatory shutdown of computers. How many times do we have city employees that leave at night and possibly don't shut their computers down? They're not in the building, the computers are still on and running. That's an area that we can cut. The second would be thermostats in buildings. Let's put digital thermostats in buildings, in all city buildings, to make sure that when people aren't there, there's no heat or air conditioning running. As we all know, electrical bills are vast and we have a lot of buildings where energy's running during the nighttime or even during the day when there aren't people in the building. We need to look at being effective and efficient in our budget. We need to go through each department and look at ways to be efficient and effective without cutting personnel. Public safety, we need to keep the community safe and this is an area where we can't afford as a city to fail. Safety is everything when it comes to Hemet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Flores? No, excuse me, Ms. Low?
Thank you. I think that there's an opportunity at this time, this hard, difficult time, to reinvent city government. We have had many retirements in the last couple of years and it's now time to look at the departments, restructure them, see how we can deliver services cheaper, utilize technology and offer the community an option. Let's hear from the community of what services they think are not essential. I don't believe that the library, nor Simpson Center, and above all, public safety can be cut. We have cut to the bare bones already, but this is the heart of our community and this will help us rebuild this community and attract the economic development that we need to bring jobs back to this valley and to preserve our way of life.
Okay. Mr. Flores?
When it comes to cuts, there's only three ways. One is to cut across the board. Everybody gets, feels the pain equally. So we can't be picking on one department and keeping that funded while another one's going down the drain. So across the board is one thing. Second thing is we have to look at inefficiencies and waste in programs and in activities the city's doing. And the third is to cut, uncut disposable programs or unwanted programs, programs that we don't need at this time. Those are the three things that I would do.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Well, the city has cut immensely and the city may and knows it has to continue to cut going forward. Things are not going to improve as rapidly as we anticipate. I would first look at every department and I'd cut from the top to the middle up. We'd look at top-heavy departments to see if we could reduce costs there. Public safety would be not the sacred cow, but it would be not the place I'd want to cut first. But I'd want to keep as many officers as I could on the street. We would check the top heaviness of that department like we would every department. I review every existing contract that the city has. These are the type of times for renegotiation of these contracts. The city is obligated for unfunded state mandatory programs. There are some things that are untouchable that we simply can't act upon. But we would review each and every department and make certain that absolute efficiencies were established in those departments. We would depend on our management and our managers to get the absolute maximum out of their people. There's many things you do within a cut program. You cross-train people, the list goes on and on so that you can backfill when your staffing gets as minimal as it is now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peters?
Yes, right here in my hand, I have the list of all the positions in city of Hemet and their salary and their benefits. And one of the things that jumps out at me is you look at the city manager, just one position I'm picking, and it's two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars a year is his salary. But the part that really jumps out at me is his benefits are one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. So he's paying two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand a year and that's not enough salary. He has one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars in benefits. That's ridiculous amount of benefits. And that, well, so that's one thing. Another thing is I would eliminate some of the positions in the city. That's what, and it's good to look at this. In the positions that I see, I would eliminate like four positions. And ones that I see is code enforcement officer. There's five different code enforcement positions. I think we could lose one code enforcement officer. Now, if you disagree, then you might be cutting a policeman. So who do you want? A policeman or do you want a code enforcement officer? I, I'm for public safety and I think the policeman is what we need. I think I'm going to run out of time, I just did, but I...
Yeah, thank you very much. Ms. Taverner?
Actually, I've been thinking about this and I had quite a few ideas, but the simplest and the easiest that would be, you would be able to implement immediately, I would take a look at the Simpson Center and all the senior activities that we do there. And I would move them to the top floor of the library, such as Meals on Wheels. There's a kitchen there, is plenty of room for all their activities and there's also an elevator. And I understand the net savings we could save in one year would be three-hundred thousand dollars. The other thing I would look at is the benefits of our retirees. I understand this might be being looked at as we speak. Our retirees, for the most part, are my age. I grew up in a generation where we all had PPOs, we all had to have our own doctors. An HMO just wasn't considered. And a few years ago, I was forced into, because of retirement and other circumstances, to an HMO. Honestly, I wouldn't trade now, but it's because it was a learning experience. Therefore, I think if you educate retirees, they might just change to an HMO and save thousands of dollars a month. Thank you.
Ms. Tibido?
Okay. In addition to looking at every department, I can look at the preliminary budget and I can see revenues and I can see expenditures. What I don't see is what is in between, what is going out actually in costs. I think those need to be evaluated. I'm sure there's a lot of areas within those numbers that different things can be eliminated within each department. But our biggest problem financially, just like in the state of California, is pension. We need pension reform. We need employees to start contributing into their own pension plans and not expecting taxpayers to constantly fund them.
Thank you. Mr. Clavere?
We need to look at the budget line item, identify where there are inefficiencies, if we need to cut back or do something different with programs. But, you know, there's a saying that says, you know, it's not how much you make, it's how much you save. So let's start there. Let's start with the budget and let's see what, as the economy begins to improve, because it will at some point, how much of that money we can save for the rainy day and use your tax dollars only for the critical services so that we're not in this kind of situation next time this happens. Let's improve the dialogue with our departments. They have a lot of good ideas for efficiencies, for revenue-generating programs that we need to give opportunities to so they can help bring some additional income. They're all, they're all good people willing to work with us to look and find ways to solve those problems. When we contract out jobs and contracts, let's look for local companies that are competitive, that offer the same quality service and jobs so that we can keep more of those tax dollars here in our community instead of having to go to Orange County Riverside and bring companies from outside in. And then be ready for the next boom, as we've heard before, and have our process for businesses to open their doors, streamline it, make it quicker, throw out the bureaucracy so that they can open their doors quicker, pay the taxes quicker and hire our own people a lot faster than that. Thank you.
Okay, all right. The next question. What would you do as a city council member to increase revenues for the city? And that question goes first to Ms. Galetta.
One of the things we need to look at to increase revenues in the city is cleaning up the city. We need to hold landlords and business owners accountable for their property and making it, to beautify it. Then we need to work on bringing good-paying jobs to the valley. We need to bring restaurants and retail to the valley. This will generate jobs and revenue in sales tax dollars. There are a lot of small things we can do as far as bringing businesses. We need to look at our planning commission and really work with them to ease some of the red tape that goes on at the planning department. I've talked to many business owners that are trying to come into the valley that say the red tape is too much. They don't want to come to Hemet. So we need to ease those things with the business owners to make it easier for businesses to come to Hemet so we can generate revenue for the city.
Okay. Ms. Low, same question. What would you do as a city council member, which you are, of course, currently, to increase revenues for the city?
I think we need to make our streets safe, emphasize the positive aspects of our public safety departments. We have one of the busiest fire departments in the entire country. We have assets here in our employees and those that live in this valley. But we need to streamline our business process. We need to eliminate government regulation that's unnecessary and makes it difficult for small business. We need to emphasize green jobs that don't pollute the air quality of our valley, improve the transportation through the valley so that we're not as congested. But we also need to showcase those businesses that are here and attract further business by promoting partnerships within this valley. This can be done and it can increase our revenues. But we also need to make sure that the state stays out of our bank accounts. They have absolutely raped cities throughout this state of over forty billion dollars in just the last five years. Cities all over this state are in trouble and Hemet is no exception. But we have assets, we need to return to tourism, we have people that come here every year from other parts of the country.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Flores?
To raise revenues for the city, I would break it down to three, three items. One is, of course, apply for government grants as much as possible. That would bring in some income. The other one is to attract good-paying jobs by attracting industry and manufacturing jobs that would bring in more people for purchasing and more people moving to the city that would become property payers and sales tax payers. So I would go for jobs to increase revenues. And third is one that I would propose to the community. Of course, I'm just being one person, you know, I could easily get outvoted on this. But I am proposing, again, because I feel that the community needs to sacrifice as well as all the employees. And I'm proposing half of one percent sales tax, targeted sales tax. And that sales tax would go to cover the library and the Simpson Center to make sure and guarantee that they do not close. And this would go, this would be a deadline of five years. In five years, once the city is back on foot, then that tax will go away. Let me put it in perspective.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Peters?
Time out. Mr. Smith? First and foremost, I will not champion, I will not expect the taxpayers to pay for the deficiencies in the Hemet budget. So I am anti-no-tax candidate. Next thing I would do is I would reduce the size of government. I would first start by realizing that this city has over nearly four hundred employees and approximately seventy-five thousand people, where the city of Temecula has a hundred-and-five thousand and two-hundred-and-two employees. We've got a big government in this small city. I would reduce that size. Internally, I would champion pension reform. We have got to get the public unions under control. It's something we cannot continue to do. That would be an immediate, a long-term fix. Immediately, I would look for the job sectors of medical, education. I'd want to develop infield projects. We've got a great community that needs infield projects. Encourage developers to come and take these vacant and dead lots and fix those. And I would develop an enterprise zone around the up-and-coming alignment of Highway Seventy-Nine.
To increase revenue, as you asked, you have, the city gets its money through sales tax and property taxes. So there's where you need to get the money. The first would be to get sales tax to increase help business. To help business, you need to have a pleasant place to live, a safe community, and you need to improve traffic conditions, the flow of traffic. There's a Walmart out away from me and I will not go to that Walmart because I know driving to that Walmart, what the traffic's going to be like to get to it. So that, you know, they're not going to get my sales tax there. And then the next thing is foreclosures and vacant homes. If you have homes that are just sitting vacant or they're in repo, you're not collecting, well, you are collecting, you're not efficiently collecting property taxes on those businesses. So that's where I would try to increase revenue for the city.
Ms. Taverner?
Sometimes, simple solutions are the easiest way to go and I think I have an idea for a longstanding revenue source. And that would be a truck parking. The city owns land out by the airport. We have a lot of truck parking by owners and operators on Elk Street. It's been a source of contentment for the residents and for the city. I believe if you were to have truck parking, you would get rid of the drivers, the owner operators that park there. It would solve their problem of where they're going to park every week when they come in and if their loads are going to be safe. It would keep the residents happier in that area and it would be a lot...
It would keep the residents happier in that area, and it would be a long source of revenue for the city of Hemet.
Ms. Tivido?
Well, I think the revenue needs to come from new businesses and people that come in to spend the money, which, when they come here, they would possibly move here if we have a wonderful community for them. And in order to do that, we're going to need to partnership with our city leaders and our communities to focus on public safety and trust. We just have to clean up our city in order to encourage businesses to come so that they can bring revenue into our valley. Because for a while, until these foreclosed homes get on the market and the taxes start being paid on them again, we're not going to have the revenue that we are accustomed to.
Mr. Clavery?
First of all, we don't want to burden our residents anymore. So no new taxes, no new fees. Let's get out of the hole that we dug in for ourselves with decisions that have been made, and let's make it work this way. Let's look for improving efficiencies and working with the departments to find ways, again, to make them more efficient, and like I mentioned earlier, to look for revenue-generating projects. One thing that's very important is, as the economy begins to slowly bounce back, businesses have decisions to make, Hemet or San Jacinto. And if we're the red tape department, if we're the one where they're going to take three or four months longer to open their doors, if we have an unstable public safety program, if we don't, oh, thank you, if we're not supporting all that, they'll open somewhere else because they're in the business to make money. And the quicker they open the doors, the quicker they'll make money, the quicker that's how you get revenue. So we need to streamline that program. We need to make it easy for them. And I repeat, this is very important. There's a lot of frustration out there with new businesses. We need to make it easy for them to open their doors. We need to make, when a business looks, Hemet needs to be a place where they say, you know, that's a safe environment, they support police, they support fire, I can open my doors in a couple months, I'm set to go, ready to make some money and provide some taxes to Hemet. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crouppa?
One of the things I would do is to protect, preserve, and actually promote our senior communities. We need to attract seniors to the senior communities we have. These people have money, and they really don't cause a lot of problem. They like to spend money, but at the same time, we need to have shopping for them, we need to have restaurants for them, we need to attract more commercial and retail establishments to Hemet. Another thing we need to do is restart our outreach to the snowbirds. Our winter visitors were a very large part of our revenue stream. And then in addition to that, I would promote or protect our existing businesses by not allowing street corner vendors. Thank you.
Thank you. We only have time for just one more question before we do a closing statement. I've had to sort of edit a little bit here, and I think we'll go with this one. And this is going to, this question will go to Ms. Low first. Do you favor term limits for members of the Hemet City Council? And if you do, what should those term limits be?
Well, I obviously believe that every four years is a term limit. I am currently in my 16th year. If the will of the people is to have term limits, then so be it. I believe that one of the problems in Sacramento is term limits. They know they're going there for a short period. They aren't committed. They're worried about where they're going to go next, and I think that's the wrong reason. I'm here because my heart is here. My heart is in my community. I'm not afraid to work it 24/7. I'm willing to give it the time that it takes. And I think a lifetime restriction on a term limit is a hindrance to the corporation. I don't support this mallet measure, but I can understand why people right now are fed up with incumbents, but they need to look at what is happening with government and who's taking the money.
Mr. Flores?
I do believe in term limits. I know there's an initiative coming up in November the 2nd, making the term limit for three terms. And of course, I'll vote for that, but I really would support a two-term term limit. I believe that you serve the community. Too many times, people become professional politicians, and then they look at it as a job. And therefore, then they get cozy, and they build up a big war chest, and then you can't get them out. And so we have people like in Washington that have been there, what, 30 years, 40 years? And I don't think that's right. I think that being in office is to serve. And I, for myself, I'm only going to run for one term, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Well, I'm certainly in favor of term limits. I wrote an argument in favor of that, the Proposition W is coming forward. I would encourage you to vote for that. There's a very good reason why we have term limits in Washington and in Sacramento. This is not a monarchy. This is not where people come into power and stay for a long period of time. I think we need to get back to citizen legislators. People live their life, gain some experience in the private sector, come into the public sector for a bit, and then go right back where they came from. I'm definitely in favor of term limits, and I believe it's the will of our community.
Mr. Peters?
Yeah, I also support term limits. I think it's good to get new, fresh blood on the council there. I think it's good not to be buddies with the other council members or the city manager or certain individuals in the government there. I think if we have term limits for the President of the United States, I think that's good enough for us.
Ms. Tavener?
I believe there's pros and cons to term limits. However, I really do believe in them. I think with term limits, I believe that the people that are already there should mentor the other people, and I think fresh ideas come along with a new person coming into office.
Ms. Tivido?
I definitely support term limits. I think in 12 years, you can come in and serve your community, give all of your ideas, your visions, and your solutions, and again, mentor those that are up-and-coming new council members and help them to see how city is run. Because there are a lot of things you have to learn when you become a council member. Those of us who are not sitting council members, we do have a lot to learn once we are elected. And I think that term limits will help put new people in with new ideas.
Ms. Clavery?
I absolutely support term limits. 12 years is plenty. I don't want to be in council for 30 years, really, but I want to be in there for 12 years. I want to, you know, right now I have a lot of passion, a lot of commitment. I'm focused. I'm going to do anything that it takes to work with the community, to work with the residents, to do what needs to be done to make Hemet a much, much better place than it is right now. And I know that we can do it together. In 12 years, I might be a little bit complacent, not that, yes, it's human nature. So we at that point want somebody else with the same energy that some of us have tonight, with the same passion, with the same commitment to get in there and keep us energized at that level all the way through. So I absolutely support them. Thank you.
Ms. Crouppa?
I believe that we, every time we go to the polls, we have the ability to limit someone's term in office. However, the way the Measure W is written, I think 12 years is an adequate length of time for anyone to give their all for city council. Thank you. I will support the measure.
Ms. Galetta?
Yes, I do believe in term limits. And to kind of reiterate what everyone else has kind of said, too, is that there is complacency that does come along with being somewhere for a long period of time. And we need new ideas and fresh approaches. And 12 years, if you can't get the job done, then give somebody else a shot at it. So yes, I do support term limits.
Thank you. We are going to move to our closing statements, one-minute closing statements, candidates. We'll begin with Mr. Peters.
Maybe I don't need a mic. Again, I'm running for the council because I love Hemet. I'm concerned about Hemet. I want our council members to make good decisions. Some of the answers to the questions up here are unrealistic. You know, we're not going to be able to balance the budget, you know, reducing the electricity bill or paper cost or something. The seven, over 70% of the budget is for employee salaries and benefits. So that's where, I mean, you can only cut just a little bit there. So, and then I have all my notes here. I was trying to find some of the other unrealistic statements. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, one minute?
Thank you. I think that local government needs a philosophical and a functional overhaul. We need to think differently, we need to act differently, and we need to spend differently. This whole idea about spend and spend, all it's done is grown government to an unsustainable level. We need to change the way we act. What happened to public servants? We need to be there for the people. We need to make certain that there is no elitism in local government. And thirdly, we need to realize that we have to spend within our means. We can no longer sustain spending more money than we have. Deficit spending never, ever works. So ultimately, local government needs to be reduced. We need to get within side the budget and determine exactly where those reductions come from, but we have to manage this to sustain our valley and to move forward. If we're going to attract business and we're going to attract jobs, the first thing that has to happen is it has to happen at the local level. And I think council people need to lead that way by not having any elitism, not have any mechanism by which they are attacked and attracted to city decisions.
Mr. Flores?
Tough times require tough decisions. You know, sometimes we're throwing out solutions that are not going to make a very big impact. This city of Hemet has lost $14 million in the last four years. This year, we're $5 million on the red, and they're making it up by concessions and cutting some expenditures. Next year, it looks like $3.5 million again. So we have to be realistic about the situation, and we have to make those tough decisions. And again, we can do cutting, we can continue getting more concessions next year, we can cut more program expenditures, then that is just going to put us at even par. So I'm proposing that we, to the community, that we sacrifice a little bit and adopt a half percent tax. And that, to put it in perspective, if you've spent $100 in general purchase, it's 50 cents. 50 cents to raise $4 million that will be targeted for the library and the Simpson Center and an amusement park that will bring in jobs and revenues to the city. And that's what I'm proposing. Thank you.
Ms. Low?
I am the only incumbent. I've been there 16 years. I know how the budget works. We've heard a lot of great ideas tonight. Many of them are outside the realm of government. Government needs to be reformed. It needs to do and deliver services differently. But the public needs to be educated into the ways of government. Everyone wants something. There is a cost to that. We have all heard that freedom is not free, and neither are city services. We have men and women that work for us, that work for you, that care greatly about their community. They deserve a decent wage. When government had money, we tried to become a little bit like the private sector. We can no longer deliver those services at that cost. And only with a partnership with our employees can we move and deliver government the way it should be. We no longer have 400 employees. Many of them lost their jobs because we don't have the business coming into this city. We need to turn that around, and at the same time, we don't need to rehire many, many people.
Thank you. Ms. Galetta?
When I grew up in Hemet, it was primarily a senior citizen community, and a lot has changed since then. Outside influences, a shift in demographics, coupled with economic difficulty and high unemployment, have made Hemet an attractive community for criminals and others who cost the city more than they contribute. When I look at what I can do for Hemet, we have to look at safety, service, and stability. Safety is our police department. We have to have a safe place to live, and you can't clean up the city when you're cutting your police force. You can't do it. When you look at services, services are an important part of our community, but we're not going to sacrifice our public safety for services all the time. We have to make sure that we have a fine balance in those. And stability, we have to bring jobs, and we have to bring a good image for Hemet. And another way to do that is through safety. So at the end of the day, you have to look at safety first to revitalize Hemet. So when you go to the polls on November 2nd, vote for Galetta.
Thank you. Ms. Crouppa?
One of the first things we have to look at, of course, is restructuring of the city government. We need to live within, in our means as a city, just as we live within our means as people. And we, the people, are the important part, we, the people of Hemet. The people need to tell city government what type of services they want and how much they are willing to pay for those services. That is the only way we're going to get through this. The way we are going, it is unsustainable. We need to be very thrifty in what we do, and of course, we have to involve the people. Thank you.
Ms. Clavery?
Let me reiterate again. 40 years in the community, homegrown, I care, I have a lot of passion, I'm willing to work with our residents to do what's best for our community. We need to manage the budget better. We can't overspend. We need to support our police and make Hemet a safer community to improve the quality of life. We need to look for ways to bring new revenues and businesses into Hemet as priorities. So if you're ready for real change and real transparency, if you're ready for no more business as usual, if you're ready for someone you can trust that is not supported by status quo, please consider Jim Clavery November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tivido?
Well, first of all, I want to say, I can't imagine even beginning to ask someone to raise taxes with almost 20% unemployment in our valley and the median household income at over $26,000. And in California, the median household income is over $47,000. So we don't have the money to pay more taxes. We need to be fiscally responsible, we need to balance our budget, we need to look at every job that's on our books as far as our employees and make tough choices. We have to do it for our future. So help me help you bring back Hemet to what we need it to be. Thank you.
Ms. Tavener?
I believe my diversified business background, coupled with my business and service dedication to this community qualifies me to be here this evening, and I'm hoping that you also agree with that, that I'm more than qualified, and vote for me. Diana Tavener, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank our candidates that spent some time with us here tonight. I'd like to thank all of you who spent some time listening to those candidates and those of you in cyberspace. I'd also like to thank the press enterprise. I think they've done an excellent job on putting these forums together. This is extremely ambitious, very ambitious. Two final comments I'd like to make. Now that all of you have the information on these candidates, now you can be informed voters. And secondly, we have an election coming up, November 2nd, and you need to vote in that election if you live in the city of Hemet. It is your civic responsibility to do so. And now I'm going to turn you back to our host. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Willie. He's just done two straight of these with a total of, what, 22 candidates? It's not easy. Thank you, Willie, very much. And we've now watched 16 of them, and all 16, we've also heard the phrase, "We've already cut to the bare bones" every single forum. So tough challenges ahead. Thank you for the passion tonight from the candidates. Thank you to the audience. We'd like to remind everybody, on November 2nd, we will have a live election show on PE.com, and we'll also have an election recap show on the morning of November 3rd. For our staff, for Angel Ortiz, for Dave Kaufman, for Louis Amistoy, I'm Nels Jensen. Thank you very much.[1751.83][1751.83] Thank you very much.